Record. Alright, you guys are all officially. And then we will share my screen. With the.
I'm only gonna be here for a few minutes.
That's okay.
I have a cancellation at six o'clock.
Think that's what I wanna do. Although, maybe not. Hold on. Or might. This is, this is what I get for trying something new. Why isn't it up there right now? Okay.
She had a blast. Yeah. Eventually have sugar, huh?
I was gonna say, we sugared her up real good. Don't extend these displays, mirror these displays. I don't know why it always goes back to doing that, but keep changes. There we go. Now, you should be able to see what I can see. No, that's not what I want you to see. Oh, okay, very good. There we go. Alright. And now that that was part of recording, welcome to the prophets of the Old Testament. Um, this is going to be, we're going to spend some time exploring the prophets of the Old Testament, and what they can teach us about God's judgment and justice for us going forward. Um, as always, I wanna say welcome. Thank you for joining us in Bible study. Um, as we explore these works, uh, we're gonna be wondering about judgment, justice, and some pretty big issues. And we wanna make sure that everybody who participates, and if you're watching from home, please take this as your sign that it's safe to come and join us. Um, these are safe places. There are no stupid questions. There are no dumb ideas. There is no, I should've known that. We're all learning together, we're all exploring together. And part of the reason I picked the prophets to do this on is because I have not spent as much time with the prophet, prophetic books, as I have in others. So I've really been enjoying digging into these the last few months, and learning about them. So introductions, I think everybody at the table knows each other, but um, if you just wanna say your name and one thing you're hoping to get out of the Bible study, I'll kinda point it there. There you go.
Hi, my name is Carly, and I'm just hoping to sharpen my sword.
Love it.
I'm Linda, and just curious to see what it's going to be.
Okay.
And I'm Grace, and honestly, this is the first Bible study I have come to since telling my young twenties, and I really wanna get back into the Bible.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, guys. Our sessions are gonna kind of flow like this. Today, we're gonna talk about the world of the prophets in general. We're gonna be looking at what was happening and why the prophets were there, and what influenced the prophetic writings. Um, the next weeks, we're gonna be looking at three core themes that we see throughout all of the prophetic books. Um, the call to worship God, or the prophetic call to avoid idolatry. Um, the call to God's justice, or the prophetic call to live as God's just and merciful people. And then the call to repent, and the prophetic call to change our ways. Then our last week, we're going to take some time to explore some of the more powerful and confusing prophetic imagery that we don't get a chance to touch on during the, the previous weeks. There's some things that quite fall neatly into some of the categories that are interesting to talk about, and um, this is also an opportunity, um, as we go through these, as your questions come up, to talk to me and say, hey, I really hope we can touch on this, or I'd really like to know about that prophet. So that's the fifth week. Um, I'm using two books aside from the Bible to, uh, inform our teachings in time today. One is From Judgment to Hope by Walter Bergman. It's a very nice, fun, light read. Well, well, it is fun. I read it on vacation, so you know. Um, it's a, it's a fairly light read. Walter Bergman is awesome. Um, the other is a textbook that is not at all a light read, but is very interesting, uh, called The Message of the Prophets. And it is much more dense, and honestly, we're probably going to be getting through the, the first part of this book, because like I said, this is an overview, not an in-depth dive into any one particular book. But that's our source material, and then of course, the Bible. I'll be quoting from the, um, New Revised Standard Edition, Updated Efficient Edition in the text, but you can feel free to use whatever edition of the Bible you would like for your reading and study. So the first question I asked my nephew while I was working on this in, in Wisconsin, um, while I was there, I said, what do you think I should teach about prophets? And him being, uh, almost twelve, had a wonderful question of saying, I wanna know what prophets are and what they said. And so I was like, okay, that's good. Those are the questions I gotta try to answer. So a prophet from, uh, to quote a book by Ralph Jacobson, Crazy Talk, are, they are the original crazy talkers. Um, these are men and women to whom God entrusted an urgent message. And it caused them to resort to wild-storied, even wilder behaviors in order to get that message across. Prophets may be strange and even disturbing at times, but what they have to say is very important. They deliver a message from God. Now, sometimes people think of prophets as fortune tellers or future predictors. That's not quite the case. The prophets are usually speaking about events in their time and their era. When they talk about catastrophes or conquering nations and things like that, they're talking within their own geopolitical climate and text. But they also have words that span history and ring true for us today, as we're going to determine and discover as we dig into these prophetic calls to resist idolatry, be just people, and repent from our sins. The, the things that they are talking about to the people of Israel and Judah are true for us as well. We can find parallels in our own world, and things that we can explore and feel in that as well. Some people like to think of prophets as social activists, prophesying and reaching out and trying to, um, uh, control and maintain change. And that's also not quite right. Prophets do speak to God's justice and good behavior, but they do it within the idea of God's will and God's expectations. Um, I like Ralph Jacobson's term for them, that they are theological activists. Um, meaning that they are looking to tell people what God acts, expects, and wants them to do. Not just what's nice, or what's right, or what's comfortable by human standards or by cultural expectations, but what God is calling us to do. And so they bring God's message to people who need to hear it, even and especially when they might not want to hear it. Prophets, despite the fact that their books have been recorded in the Bible and they've been remembered and, and issued like this, are wildly unpopular people throughout scripture. They do. They get killed, they get exiled, they get thrown into all kinds of situations. It's not always fun. But they are very fascinating people, and we love studying them. There are three major prophets. The prophetic books in the Bible are not in chronological order. If you were to open your Bible, Grace, and look at the table context, you would see the books of the prophets, starting with Isaiah and going, uh, I forget, I think maybe Zedekiah or Zechariah is the last one, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But they're grouped according to major and minor prophets. And, and if you look at different, um, traditions and different Bibles, like in, in the Jewish Bible and the Jewish Torah, the prophets are located in a different section than they are in ours. Our Bible puts the prophets after the books of Psalms and Proverbs, so you have the, the prehistory with Genesis and Exodus and stuff, then you have the history which tells of the kingdoms. Then you have the poetry books of, um, uh, Psalms and the wisdom literature, and then you have the prophetic books. They're grouped as major and minor prophets, not because of what is important or unimportant about what they have to say, but strictly based on the length of time, or the amount of things they have to say. Each of these three books, Isaiah, Exa-, or, um, the, the three major prophets, um, Isaiah, Jeremiah, and Ezekiel, take up their own school. The remaining twelve prophets were likely condensed into one school, to kind of give you an idea of the difference in the scope between these writings. And some of the prophetic books were even written over multiple periods of time. For example, Isaiah is particularly interesting book of the Bible, because it was written, first Isaiah starts before the fall of Judah in, um, in, uh, Jerusalem, and then goes to second Isaiah, the second part of Isaiah happens towards the end of the Babylonian exile, and the last part of Isaiah was likely written as people returned from exile. And we know this is the case because they're referring to different events in history. They're talking about different things that are happening for their people. They're talking about different challenges that the people are facing. And it's almost better to think of the book of Isaiah not as a scroll by a certain author, but as a collection or an anthology of teachings from a school of thought that had started in Jerusalem, gone into exile, come back, and as they were doing, they continued to follow their teacher and think through what these messages mean. So that's, that's just one of the examples of just how complicated these can be. And if you wanted to get even more complicated, uh, and I don't expect anybody to, um, remember this, um, no, no, go back. Spent too much time on this slide to skip it. There are not a lot of good tables out there to tell you who's preaching when, because it's really hard for us to pin down exactly when all these prophets are preaching. For example, you'll notice several of these have question marks. Um, Joel, for example, Nahum, uh, the Jonah, we have no earthly clue wh- when Jonah was written. Uh, Obadiah, we know nothing about him, except for he's referring to a land called Edom. So some of the prophets give us a lot of historical details about who was king, what was happening. They refer to events that we can kind of place in the timeline. Others refer to more general events. Uh, part of the problem we have with Joel is that he refers to this catastrophic plague of locusts. But we have no idea which plague of locusts that was. That was a fairly regular occurrence. And there's three different schools of thought as to when he was writing. So this is just very loose idea of kind of the order. Amos is around probably one of the oldest prophets. Um, and like I said, Joel, Zechariah, Malachi, as they're writing in the post-exilic period, are kind of the, the youngest prophets. And then we have Jonah, who could've been writing anytime in the fourth or fifth century BCE. Take your pick. Prophetic writing, though, is very poetic. You don't need to worry all the time about who was writing when. If you've got a general idea of what was happening around the time, you can start teasing apart some of the images and imagery that we get with this kind of poetic writing. These are professional speech givers. They are here to make a point. And they're gonna use vivid imagery to call attention to how the people, rulers, or nations have fallen away from their covenant with God. And this is really important, because this is where we're getting to get into things like the fiery chariots that Ezekiel describes, or the images of the, um, you know, calling the people very harsh language, like you have become like a whore or prostitute. Um, they're gonna draw up a lot of this. It's also one of our challenges in understanding prophetic imagery, because it used the imagery and the symbols that were known then. And the context has greatly changed. Um, Isaiah refers to Jerusalem like a shed in a cucumber field. That image doesn't mean much to us, two thousand five hundred, or actually closer to three thousand years after Isaiah was writing. But it would've been a perfect example for someone in his time. It would've called the image an incredibly vulnerable temporary structure that wasn't invested in. Um, it's a farm that was, it was meant to be, you know, you're just there for a little while to watch the cucumbers and make sure that the animals don't get them, and this was just a little awning that you could hide under to get some shade during the heat of the day. And not the permanent, established, revered temple of God that Jerusalem should be. So we face that challenge. We also face a challenge in that some of the, um, hyperbole and homophones that they use to make these key points don't translate into English. For example, in Isaiah five seven, he says, "For the vineyard of the Lord of hosts is the house of Israel, and the people of Judah are his cherished garden. He expected justice but saw bloodshed, righteousness but heard a cry." That's fairly clear and strong language for us today, but it loses something when it's not in Hebrew, because the Hebrew word for justice is mishap, mishap. I'm, I can't say it. Mishap. And it sounds very similar to mishap, which is bloodshed. So if you were listening to this in Hebrew, as it was preaching, it would've said, he, he expected to see mishap. And instead, he saw mishap. It would be so close, but not quite, and it would be this word that sounds similar, but is the exact opposite of what God is expecting and intending. And that would've made a really powerful impression on people. If you think about song lyrics or political speeches today, where people use that kind of language, where people use um, words that sound similar to describe emotion or experience. Um, Bob Dylan is a great, look at some of the lyrics of Bob Dylan, um, in some of his protest songs. He does this sort of thing all the time. In fact, uh, the author of this book, um, J. Daniel Hayes, uh, holds up John Dylan's song, um, "The Times Are Changing," as an example of, um, speech that you, so you can look at the language and see, and then think, wow, if this wasn't in English, what would we lose by not hearing how these words sound the same, how they flow the same? So we face that challenge with prophetic writing as well. And, and a lot of it is stuff that you don't, we're not gonna get really heavy into all of it all the time, so don't freak out there. I, I barely passed Hebrew, and as you can see, I could barely say the words. But it's important to remember that that's happening, especially as we're looking at these texts and these images, and struggling with what they might mean for us today. Each of the prophets has their own focus, their own style, and their own message. But they all kind of have some key core themes running through the books. And those themes are the three sessions that we're going to be kind of going through. The core thing is that we have broken the covenant with God through idolatry, injustice to the poor, and through empty worship. And that God has been faithful to His promises, while we have not been. There's a call to repent. God wants us to repent. But if there is no repentance, there will be judgment. And the judgment will be harsh. But mercy will follow that judgment. God will not be angry forever. This is a style and a thread that you see weave throughout all the prophetic books, and over and over again in the major prophets, as they go through these cycles of judgment and mercy, and judgment and mercy, and judgment and mercy. Prophetic books are often trying to help people understand tragic things that are happening in the world around them, that result from poor human behavior and decision-making, and as many of the prophets will say, poor leadership. Um, and that then are tempering that judgment with the hope and the promise that God continues to hold out for the people. And they're beautiful messages of what it means to resist and endure during difficult times, and to be comforted from our future hope. There's a reason that the books of the prophets are so often quoted in, um, quoted by activists and civil, or, or, um, social justice-minded people and speeches. Um, because they really do have a lot to say about living in this kind of in-between world, where we have a God who makes a promise amidst a very broken world that we live in, and we're trying to hold both things and reconcile these two different things. So that's where we see a lot of things that can come into our lives and our world today. We're gonna talk a lot about timelines in this first session, um, and, and history, because one of the things it's really important to talk about with the prophets is, y- you don't have to have a whole the, you don't, you don't have to have this level of theological understand, or of historical understanding about what's going on. But, but you do need to have kind of a broad spectrum of what was happening in the world of the prophets during their writing. So when we talk, it's important to remember that we are talking, everything we're talking about happened before the birth of Christ, or before the common era. So that's year zero. As we're doing this, Christian rulers viewed the birth of Jesus as the start of a new era in human history. So that's why they kind of reset the clock around then. And we say Jesus was generally born between the year zero and three A.D., um, which is Latin for after God's dominion. Um, or the common era, as people call it today in some circles. Once you're on the other side of that zero, so we are now two thousand and twenty-five years past that year zero. If you wanna know how long ago something was for that, from that, you have to take the two thousand twenty-five years from our time and add it to however many years back it went. So for example, if something was a thousand years before the birth of Christ, it's roughly three thousand twenty-five years ago. If something was in around the year five hundred, it was about two thousand five hundred and twenty-five years ago. So that's a kind of a way to think about it. All of the books that we're going to talk about happened between the year one thousand BCE and four hundred and forty-five BCE. So we're talking roughly three thousand to twenty-five hundred years ago that these writings took place, to the best of our knowledge and understanding. Like I said, they may discover new evidence or new thing. There's always scholarly thought coming out about dating the books of the prophets. But during that time period in the world, there were three major empires in the part of the world where the Jewish people lived, and where these prophets were writing. You had the Assyrian Empire that started, um, and they kind of rose to power around the year one thousand and stayed in power until the year six hundred and twelve, but they were kind of falling off. Um, the Babylonian Empire meanwhile, was coming up at that time, around seven forty-seven, and they were really strong. They are gonna defeat the Assyrians and become the major empire in the area until around the year five thirty-nine, and then finally, um, again, there's a little overlap as the Persian Empire is coming up, but then they're going to defeat the Babylonian Empire in five thirty-nine, and, um, they're going to be the major power player in the area, um, after that. We'll see why that matters in a bit. Really quick and dirty history of Israel. Um, like I said, you wanna understand that these are happening in these areas. And there's five major areas that, um, we see prophets writing in the Bible. There's the United Kingdom, starting around the year one thousand to the year nine hundred and twenty-two. That's when all twelve tribes of Israel are under one king, and it only lasts for about seventy-eight years or three generations. Then there's the divided kingdom, where the no- ten northern tribes become one nation, Israel, and the two southern tribes become another nation, Judea. And this lasts for about two hundred years until the Assyrians conquer Israel. Judea, which is still populated by Israelites, cuz that's the name of all the twelves combined, tribes combined, you know, not to make things too confusing, lasts, um, from seven twenty-two until about five eighty-six. And that's when it falls to Babylon. Then there's the exile, which is about a sixty-year period. Um, depending on when people went into exile and when they returned. But as the Babylonians were defeated by the Persians, the Persians ended the exile and told the people they could return to their homes. And then you have the post-exile period for about ninety-three years or so, where people are back in Jerusalem, they're back in the Holy Land, they're trying to rebuild their temples and their cities, but they're not sure how to do it, and they're dealing with all this conflict. So we're gonna take a little bit closer look at those different time periods, again, very high-level, um, quick and dirty type stuff. The United Kingdom, kind of united, um, starts with the twelve tribes of Israel becoming united under, um, King Saul. We read about this in the books of First and Second Samuel, and First and Second Kings. Um, this is where you have Saul, you have the stories of David, and you have King Solomon. Those are the three kings of the, um, United Kingdom. And it stretches from far in the north all the way down to Jerusalem, which is in that purple area there. And you can kind of see it grows. Saul's kingdom is the purple, David's kingdom is the green, and then Solomon is the, um, red. So it's been a growing kingdom. Um, you can see the surrounding areas and peoples, the Edomites and the Philistia, or Philistia, Phoenicians, and all these other groups that you hear, the Ammonites, all these groups that you hear about in the Bible, um, and you read about all those people in this area. This is when we see the prophets Samuel and Nathan really at work. Samuel, of course, will anoint, um, King Saul, and then we'll kind of talk about how God has revoked his blessing from Saul as he anoints David. Um, as David rules, you'll get, uh, Nathan who'll come up when David starts messing around with Bathsheba, and has his little fling that gives him his son Solomon. Uh, Nathan's gonna come up and kind of trick David into seeing how sinful he's been, and and that's that famous Bible scene where, you know, he says, he gives King David this story about a man who's had stolen a sheep from somebody, and just, you know, this, that was, he only had it, and it was one sheep, and David's so mad, he says, "They should be killed," and, and Nathan says, "You are that man." And David is shocked and dismayed and repents, and it's a whole thing. But those are the kinds of prophetic, uh, the prophets to the kings that you're gonna see there. And if you really wanna make your brain hurt, you can try and line up which prophets were speaking to which kings, cuz some of them talk to them in their books, and some of them don't. I'm gonna spare you all that, because it made my brain hurt, and I figured I didn't need to do that to you. But that's the United Kingdom, and you see that in those books. And here, you can kind of see where the twelve tribes fall within that area. And we wanna look at this because it's, there's a, a really clear demarcation point here. This is Jerusalem, right down here. And this is, uh, where is it? Samaria is somewhere up here. All of these tribes, from Dan, Benjamin, Gad, Reuben, all of these tribes here are gonna form the northern kingdom of, uh, Israel. And they're gonna focus their worship around the mountain. And, uh, their kingdom, or their sense, their area will be in Judah. Judah and Simon, Simon, Zimian, will be the only ones that stay with the Davidic line of royalty, and that's what the division is ultimately about. And the, well, the Levites, yes. The Levites are the priestly class. So the Levites are kind of scattered throughout, but they would've been around the temple area in Jerusalem mostly. So they, that would've been their home. They were the, um, the, the priestly tribe that didn't have land. They had that responsibility.
So they would be in Judah.
Yes, they would be in Judah. So what happens is after the death of Solomon, um, Solomon had all these building projects, had all this, um, enslavement, had all these, um, economic turmoil, and people were angry, and so they go to his son Rehoboam and say, "Can you ease up a little bit?" And the prophets say to Rehoboam, "Listen to them. Tell them you're gonna work with them. Be kind to them." And Rehoboam says, "No, I'm gonna be even worse than my father." Doesn't work out. Kingdoms divide. Judah stays with the Davidic line, and he is very concerned with that. And then ye- the northern kingdom starts having other kings and successive. There's a few good kings in Judea. There's no good kings in, um, Israel. Israel is just one disaster after another, um, but it doesn't seem that way at first. Um, the northern kingdom actually looks like it's going to be very popular and very well done. Um, it lasts two hundred years, and it has lush valleys, it has accesses to ports on the Mediterranean. And it has lush valleys. It has accesses to ports on the Mediterranean. It enjoys prosperity, power, prestige. And it has a lot of unrest because of that. It was a much more desirable place to conquer than Judah was. It had a lot more wealth and power. And but it also meant that it had a lot more struggles. The proximity to the Canaanites meant there was always more temptation to worship other gods, particularly Baal. And we will see the prophets of Israel, Amos, Hosea, Micah, and to some extent Isaiah really leaning into that and being angry about the worship to Paul, Baal and Asher. Who you also would have heard about from Elijah and Elijah when they, you know, did battle with those prophets. There's nineteen kings that came to power in this two hundred year period. So if you you think about that, twenty kings over two hundred years. About ten years each. There's a lot of social unrest. There's a lot of turmoil. There's a lot of upheaval. And they try very hard, but they get pretty well crushed by the Assyrians. Like decimated. In the year seven twenty two, the capital of Samaria falls and there is no northern kingdom anymore. We read about this in Second Kings, chapter seventeen. Then the king of Assyria invaded all the land and came to Samaria. For three years he besieged it. In the ninth year of Hoshiah, the king of Assyria captured Samaria. He carried the Israelites away to Assyria. Yet the Lord warned Israel and Judah by every prophet and every seer saying, turn from your evil ways and keep my commandments and my statutes. In accordance to the law that I can command your ancestors that I sent to you by my servants, the prophets. They would not listen and were stubborn as their ancestors had been. And they did not believe in the Lord their God. So the prophets, the prophets that would have been doing this are the early chapters of Isaiah, as I said, Amos, Hosea. They would have been talking to them. They would have been calling for repentance. They would have been pointing out the dangers of these gathering armies and empires around them and trying to call them into wiser paths and reconciliation with God. And yet they don't listen to it. Israel is in exile for over a hundred years, hundreds of years actually. And their identity is pretty much destroyed. Those tribes that went into exile, they still have places where you can trace the tribes and where they were settled and, you know, you can get in, you can go really far down that rabbit hole if you want. But if by and large part that identity was wiped out. And you'll see future identities of Israel really focusing around Jerusalem going forward from there. And and that southern part of the kingdom. Southern kingdom of Judah is the tie, basically the tribes of Judah and Benjamin. I'm sure the Levites were there as well attending to the temple. They remain loyal to the Davidic line of kings. That's why in Isaiah, as you move through the book of Isaiah, he's very concerned with the Davidic line. And thinks that that's the correct and holy way. Isaiah is the one who's going to give us a branch from Jesse's tree as a foretaste that a new Davidic king will rule. And then, of course, the New Testament writers will, particularly Matthew, will trace lineages from Jesus' parents all the way back to the line of David. So that they can connect these prophecies and these ideas. Can connect it to that images that Isaiah is giving us. We read a lot of Isaiah during the time of Advent because there's so many good images that do translate and that were taken from New Testament writers, taken from there and quoted in their writings hundreds of years later. So it's built on a hill. Judea is limited at produce cereal crops. But it couldn't do a lot. The the crops of oil and olives and sheep, they they struggled with that. There's no access to the sea, so trade is restricted. And it survives basically by becoming a vassal state of Assyria. Judah is kind of sandwiched between the Assyrian Empire and the Egyptian Empire. And what they're gonna do is they're going to become a state, a vassal state of Assyria. And then when the Babylonians come in, they're going to kind of say, they're going to actually try to partner with Egypt against the Babylonians. And then the Babylonians are going to win and they're going to say, hey, we're on your side. And then the Babylonians will back off and they're like, no, really, we're on your side. And there's going to be this whole back and forth thing that the prophets are going to say, don't do it. But and basically there's a series of smaller times when Babylon comes and puts down revolts and carries people off into exile until finally Nebuchadnezzar is going to come along and they're going to just be fed up with it and he will destroy the temple and the everything. And the major prophets at this time are going to, we're going to see, this is where we're going to see Isaiah, Jeremiah, Ezekiel, we're going to hear from Obediah, Micah, Nahum, Habakkuk and Zephaniah. So they're all writing in this time. And that kind of gives you an idea of how anxious everybody was of how people are looking and and all of this turning to God, calling to God, fighting about what God is saying or not saying. And we have to remember that the, you know, they're going to speak about false prophets in their books and how you can you know, pointing to the ones who say, everything's fine. And they're saying, don't you believe it? You know, just, just like people do today. It's a little scary, honestly, when I look at it. I'm, I find myself a little bit both humbled and frightened by how little humanity has changed in three thousand years. But they're going to be a kingdom until around the year of five eighty six. And like I said, there's several back and forths, but eventually Nebuchadnezzar will come in. We read about this at the end of Second Kings, chapter twenty five. And in the ninth month of his reign, in the tenth month, on the tenth day of the month, King Nebuchadnezzar of Babylon came with his army against Jerusalem and laid siege to its bulwarks against it all around. So the city was besieged until the eleventh year of King Zedekiah. On the ninth day of the fourth month, and then there's a little break, or on the ninth day of the fourth month, the famine became so severe that there was no food for the people of the land. And then it goes on in the fifth month of the seventh day of the month, which was the nineteenth year of King Nebuchadnezzar, king of Babylonian. Nebuzirad, the captain and the bodyguard, a servant of the king of Babylon, came to Jerusalem. He burned the house of the Lord, the king's house and all the houses of Jerusalem. Every great house he burned down. So this is the fall of the temple and the fall of Jerusalem and the exile of the Jewish people for that final time. Which brings us into this time known as the Babylonian exile. Which I said is actually several smaller exiles. Ezekiel, for example, will go into exile long before the rest of them. He writes most of his book to the people in exile. And writes most of his sayings and times to the upper class who had been taken in one of the first exiles. Jeremiah is writing and he is given a choice to remain or go into exile and he remains in the land after the exile has happened. And so you get different reading those two, you get very different perspectives and very different ideas of what's happening to the people. But this was actually a fairly common practice for for kingdoms at that time. When you conquered new land, you broke up the people, you uprooted them, you took the higher, they they're not taking all the people. They're taking the kings, they're taking the priests, they're taking the scribes, they're taking the merchants, the people of higher class and status. They're carrying off and they're going to resettle them into their courts. And some of the books of the prophets and Daniel, which is kind of a prophetic book and kind of not a prophetic book, it could go, there's people who make the case either way. I haven't been strongly swayed one way or the other. But the book of Daniel, you know, is a great example. They've taken these young Israelite priests or, you know, from Jerusalem and they've carried them off and they're trying to make them into good Babylonian rulers. They've they've got them in their training camps, their education schools are going to make them you know, people of status and powers so that the next generation becomes invested in the conquering empire. And they put down roots and then not only do they take those people out, they move other people in. So the land gets resettled by new people and new inhabitants who then call it their homeland. And so it's hard to go back, which we're going to find out when we talk about the post exile. So there's a whole lot of thought that goes into this, but it's a way of forming and shoring up your empire and helping people remain true or claim the empire as their identity versus their identity that they had before they were conquered. And this is really interesting because for the Jewish people, they really stuck to their identity as followers of God largely by clinging to the writings and the scripture. The the Davidic line of kings had been broken and Jerusalem had been destroyed. That was what Isaiah was highly influenced by. The temple had been destroyed. That was what Ezekiel had been highly influenced by. The covenant that God had made with his people had been destroyed and broken. That was what Jeremiah writes a lot about. All of these things are gone. But these writings and these stories and these histories remain. And it's not a coincidence that a lot of the Old Testament books take their final shape and form during the exile and post exilic period. The earliest made their final forms in in the United Kingdom and stuff like that. But a lot of these books solidified into the way we get them now during this time of exile and coming back from exile because it remained a touchstone for cultural identity that people could cling to. And it became the way they could continue to have their faith and their relationship with God. Remember, the temple was where God came to earth. So one of the things we're going to see throughout the prophets is this idea that God has abandoned that or that God is no longer in the city and therefore the city no longer is protected by God. God, this, it's broken between heaven and earth and the wild and crazy idea that maybe God is moving freely in the world and not confined to a temple. And that's really going to scare a whole lot of people. But it becomes this awesome exploration of how do you remain the people when you are, you've lost all of those cultural touchstones?
Doesn't the temple get rebuilt?
The temple does get rebuilt. Herod rebuilds the temple. Yes, in the New Testament, Herod rebuilds the temple. And then his Oh, gosh. Well, the temple would have been destroyed in five eighty six. And the temple had been rebuilt by Herod shortly before Jesus' birth. So probably five hundred to four hundred and fifty years. Give or take, that that'd be my guess. But it was a long time. And there are efforts made to rebuild the temple. But it doesn't finally get rebuilt until much, much later. So so that's, that's an interesting thing about that. During the exile, we'll we'll see Ezekiel, like I said, who are writing to exile community. We'll see other prophets writing there. Until we finally get into this post exile period where people return to the land. But like I said, it's not smooth sailing. The temple has been destroyed. People, other people, the Samaritans, those will be the Samaritans that we hear so much about in the New Testament are, have populated the land. There's a great deal of conflict between returning Jewish people because there's still classism. So the upper class has been carried off into exile and thinks that and it has their suffering, but the poorer class has been left there to fend for themselves and has their suffering and there's still quite a bit of hardship and hard feelings about it. And intermarrying and are you pure or are you not pure? Can you, one of the big conflicts we'll see in the later exile is candies. People who were not exiled. We help us rebuild the temple. Are they really Jewish people because they weren't exiled and didn't have this experience? So the exile itself becomes almost a cultural marker of purity and who's really and who's not. And then, and you'll you'll see Zechariah and Haggai and Malachi writing about these times. And really uncovering that and kind of digging into it. That takes us to the end of what I've prepared for us tonight. But unless anybody has questions or comments or anything in particular they want to dig into. Awesome. Not really. Okay. Well, next week, we're going to be talking about the prophetic call to worship. So some things to consider as you prepare for that one is what does worshiping God alone mean to you? What are examples of idolatry that you can think of? Shouldn't be very difficult to come up with a few. And how do we worship God alone and still live in a multicultural world? Because that's a question that Christians and Jewish people have been asking ever since this whole idea of monotheism came up. And if you want to do some reading, like I said, we're going to be going all over and jumping around from book to book. But if you want to do a little reading, you can kind of skim through some of the books of the prophets for examples of idolatry. If you come across one that you find particularly compelling, send me a note and I'll make sure to include it. But think, think about the images that they use. Look for things and conversations about marriage, about relationship, about and those sorts of things, because those are going to be a very big image when it comes to this idolatry factor. And we'll dive into that and explore that in more detail next week. Thank you for coming. Thank you for watching. If you're on the Zoom, I'm going to stop the share now so that you guys can log off. Stop recording.